Yes.
Like old square.
Hey, you okay?
No.
Then they change.
Oh. I see myself.
Or say, well, you gotta. Start.
Yeah. Yeah, probably.
I have grants. Have the. So we would. For.
Yeah.
I have.
This is.
Or on the campus.
Is that a zoom?
Yeah. But yeah.
It's a little strange.
Yeah.
Well, just.
Every.
Probably.
So.
Probably. Or.
This is.
Do you?
Any progress?
If you want to take one. The thing I'm like, for this property.
I need. There's.
Four things in those.
No.
Order line.
But still.
They started.
We're standing.
Like. We're not worse. Both like.
As Beijing, he said, oh, I'm good. Well, that's good.
Started out at snow.
Yeah, I'm just getting over it. Whatever.
Yeah, they can stop.
Maybe every time he does. That would be a twelve grand. Top. And.
Oh, okay.
It's like ninety four straight.
He's got.
Yeah.
Maybe inside.
And so.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Or to.
Oh.
Yeah.
People.
Well, nobody.
Talk there. They can. And.
You know, after another work.
That's a good thing.
They said.
That'd be last hour.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody.
Well, my.
I'm sorry.
Not only.
Yes.
I'd have.
Nobody.
Should.
Now.
Maybe.
Some people say maybe they go.
Take a look.
Same.
Very.
Same folks.
Yes.
Well, I want to say.
Yeah.
You said.
The territory.
People.
In here.
Just doing. I didn't.
My director.
There's two. Check.
I want to see.
Always.
Yeah.
I was.
Yeah.
That's.
He said, I want to be with us.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm going to sleep.
It's.
Water.
You.
It's.
Well, there was.
Much.
For national.
I'm.
What?
One.
There isn't.
There are.
I mean.
Anything.
That's.
Around.
Remember.
She.
Still.
For.
He didn't.
Stop.
Yeah.
You're.
Yeah, I was.
Exactly.
Now.
I was.
We talked.
Yes.
Again.
Just.
I'm.
They. It's. Me.
Well, what do you?
Put.
Tell.
I sense like.
Tools.
Two.
Setting.
Where.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's.
Really.
You hit.
You have.
I'm.
Boy.
Very.
Back.
Play.
And when I'm. Yes.
We didn't.
Go into.
At once.
I'm.
Still.
You see.
By then.
Got it.
Tell.
They get.
It's.
I.
So.
Since.
So many.
Great.
Such.
So.
Yeah.
Best.
I haven't been.
So.
Very.
I'm.
Pregnant.
First.
We're.
Little.
Uh, who doesn't?
Maybe.
That dialogue.
Something.
If.
It's.
It.
Change.
I'm. President. Yes. Good thing.
A lot.
I'm.
Second.
Same.
Yeah.
It's.
Okay. I'm.
I know.
Okay.
Was.
Well. There were. Were. Oh, my. Those. I. Okay. I was. When. I had enough.
They will.
Let.
Oh.
I had. So I sound just like. Well, I missed. I can't.
With.
All.
That.
She.
Was.
Yeah.
I'm. There. I hope. I do. I do. You know. Hard work. People still send anything in.
There.
Or is it just you go. You. I'll let you all know. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, the way those are.
Commissions.
Yeah.
They may be.
Or you go there.
Feel like.
The guy was.
That's about stopping.
But.
That was just. Like. Why? No. How?
Contest.
Then sometimes they extended.
And.
Those.
Yeah. So hopefully. That's only bad. Because you would like to stay in. Columbus.
Yeah.
I think.
Almost. You have a post.
Yeah.
And they.
We have to go there.
Or. They have. They. Do. They. They. Cracker. Who's not. Western. And they. Thirty. Say that I have arrived. They go. And then. Then. He said that. They never studied. Was in progress. And then I'm like, oh, I'm going to be. But you know, of course. This one. That. But for you. That's. I tell them. Yeah. Your students. Were. Was. They told. I. He wanted. Where I. Bought car. And I will. Have. This. March. I know.
Oh.
Well.
Yes.
Just. I'm going to. They hope. I'm. Going somewhere. Yeah. The pains. They don't.
I think.
So.
We. Other tour still in one. That. Wow. Oh, no. It's. I. It's. But there's only one. Orders. With. Try. You. I mean. irritating.
Speed. They. Learn.
Oh, my. What?
One. Defense.
Oh.
What?
What?
Right. Zero. The line.
Right.
Just.
My. So.
Yeah.
Like. That.
For. Her. Very. Very. All.
Other day.
But.
Last.
That goes.
And.
Yeah. Three. I wonder. Greek is going out with this.
Really?
They could. We go. Okay. Come. What do you do? You should.
So.
It's. A. Kind of. To sit empty. Exactly. That's where I love. Why would you go down to keep a loan? There. Twenty year. And you'd rather like. Risk it. In an area where. What's. God. Like a sis. Kill. When he just went out. Never.
They. They just.
Bad.
Like they ever. On.
Same. Then.
That's. Something.
I know. They were.
Because they were.
They were.
Fall.
Yeah. I see. There was a. But I am.
Were you? They.
Totally. The women. Snyder. Hey, how are you?
Okay.
It's.
My.
Friends.
Yeah.
All.
Going up.
Are you?
I guess.
Right.
Before.
We.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Hi. How are you?
Turn. On. My. Just. Oh, yeah. Other thing. You can keep your mic on at times, but if anyone else.
Oh.
We're. Doing how we keep that. Midget.
That's.
Just. Maybe. And.
What are you doing? John?
Oh. My.
But.
Chair is going to have. It.
That is.
Fair.
Is there a. Done. So spending too much time. Sitting down. For.
Or you can just shout. Done.
Is there anything?
Making.
Yeah.
So. Said. This. Not. My. You guys. I'm. Set. That.
Okay. Please. Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call the February thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. Development Commission meeting order. We do not have to look out the window at the ice pole flag. Right here. Pardon. The agents. Pardon. The.
You know. It's. Two. This. Prediction. Indemnity. Prediction.
Is the applicant for case number one in the house? Okay, we're going to. We're going to skip. I could ask exactly. We're two in the house, but those same people. We're going to skip the first three cases. Until he gets here. And we're going to start tonight's agenda with case number four.
Hold on. Case number. Three.
Two. One, two, and three are both are all the same applicant.
No, I'm here. I'm sorry. I didn't have.
Oh, you are here.
I am here. I thought. Sorry. I thought we were application number three, so I apologize.
Okay. You know, when you. Clog up. When you clog up the agenda, you deserve some respect here.
Yes.
Okay. Case. Case number one is Z twenty four dash zero seventy four. Eight forty six to eight forty eight. Seymour Avenue.
Zero point one one acres. I consist of one undeveloped parcel in the R two F residential district. The applicant requests the R four residential district allowing up to a four unit dwelling. While the applicant proposes a three unit dwelling as further detailed in the concurrent council variance. North and south of the site are single unit dwellings in the R two F residential district. East of the site is undeveloped land in the R two F residential district. West of the site is a two unit dwelling in the R two F residential district. Concurrent C B twenty four dash one sixty four was filed demonstrating that three unit dwellings include variances for lot width, lot area, required parking, and side yards. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The site is located within the planning boundaries of the near south side area plan, which recommends medium density against residential land uses. The plan includes early adoption of C two P two planning policies. The site is located within the boundaries of a Livingston Avenue area commission whose recommendation is for approval. The proposed R four residential district will allow residential development that is consistent with both the land use recommendation of the near south area plan and the existing development pattern of the area. The proposal does not add any competitors to the area, and therefore C B departments recommend approval.
Okay, any questions? Traffic, Dan?
No traffic issues.
And plan?
We have outstanding comments related to the C B that are in support of the zone.
No. Okay. Is anyone here to speak regarding case number one tonight, Seymour Avenue? Okay, you have staff approval and you have area commission approval. Would you like to add anything to the staff's?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of the app? I would like a motion to take a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of taking a vote? Okay, please call a roll.
Denise Key Shanklin?
Yes.
Maria Camry?
Yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Johnny Werson?
Yes.
Dan Muque?
Yes.
Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes, you are approved. But you don't have to get up and leave. Okay? We will go to case number two and the address of the. Application number is Z twenty four day zero seventy seven. And the address is seven eighty six, seven eighty eight Seymour Avenue.
The zero point twelve acre site consists of one undeveloped parcel in the R two F residential district. The applicant again requests the R four residential district allowing up to a four unit dwelling, while the applicant proposes a three unit dwelling as further detailed in the concurrent council variance. North and east of the site are two unit dwellings in the R two F residential district. South and east. Sorry, south and east of the site are single unit dwellings in the R two F residential district. Concurrent C B twenty four dash one sixty seven has been filed demonstrating that three unit dwelling includes variances for lot width, lot area, required parking, and side yards. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The site is located within the boundaries of the near south side area plan, which recommends medium density against residential land uses. And the plan includes early adoption of C two P two design guidelines. The site is located within the planning boundaries of the Livingston Avenue area commission. Good recommendation is for approval. The proposal is an R four residential district, which will allow residential development that is consistent with the land use recommendation of the near south side area plan. And the existing development pattern of the area. The proposal does not add any competitors to the area, and therefore city department's recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any questions? Comments? And traffic?
No traffic issues.
And Chris?
Same comments. Planning is supportive of zoning, but there's outstanding comments on the C.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak regarding case number two on Seymour Avenue? Again, same thing. You good?
No further comment.
Okay, I need a motion to take a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right. Please call a roll.
Maria Camry?
Yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Johnny Werson?
Yes.
Dan Muque?
Yes.
Denise Key Shanklin?
Yes.
Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes, you're approved there, too. Okay, case number three. They were all like this. Z twenty four day zero seventy nine. Seven ninety eight Seymour Avenue.
All right, this is the third last one on Seymour. This is a point one two acres lake consisting of one undeveloped parcel in the R two F residential district. The applicant is requesting again the R four residential district to allow up to a four unit dwelling, while the applicant proposes the three unit dwelling as further detailed in a concurrent council variance. North, south, and west of the site are two unit dwellings. R two F residential district. East of the site is a single unit dwelling in the R two F residential district. Concurrent C B twenty four. Dash one seventy have been filed demonstrating a three unit dwelling and includes variances for lot width, lot area, required parking, and side yards. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The site is again in the planning boundaries of the near south side area plan, which recommends medium density mixed residential land uses and has early adoption of C two P two design guidelines. The site is located within the boundaries of Livingston Avenue area commission whose recommendation is for approval. The proposed R four residential district will allow residential development that is consistent with both the land use recommendation of the south near side area plan. And the existing development pattern of the area. It does not add any competitors to the area, and city department's recommendation is approval.
Okay, any questions?
I have.
Yes.
Or these are all the same size lots. They're all in the same block. They all. They'll look different or the same. Same unit or not. You don't know.
I mean, they take direction from the area commission about, you know, sometimes there might be different color schemes and things, but, you know, from a curb. The curb, they're going to all look pretty similar.
Okay.
And land use. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, you need a motion to call a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor? Please call a roll.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Johnny Werson?
Yes.
Dan Muque?
Yes.
Denise Key Shanklin?
Yes.
Maria Camry?
Yes.
And Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes, you are approved.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Seymour Avenue? Okay. Next case, case number four, Z twenty four day zero fifty nine. Sixty nine fifty five to sixty nine ninety nine Harlem Road.
Yes.
You the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, come forward. Let's hear what the staff report looks like.
It's like this is of two undeveloped parcels within the R rural district. The requested L M district will allow a self storage facility. Within all of the site are single unit dwellings in the P U D four planned unit development district. In the south is a multi unit residential development under construction in the A R one apartment of this district. In the east are single unit dwellings in the R rural district located within Plain Township. To the west are a multi unit residential development under construction in the L A R one limited. Size within the planning boundaries of the Rocky Fork Black Lake Accord, which recommends village residential and natural rural corridor land uses at its locations. Size within the planning boundaries of the Rocky Fork Black Lake. Black Lake Accord panel, which whose recommendation is for approval. Limitation text restricts the use of the property to self stored facility and inclusive development standards addressing building and parking setbacks, lot coverage, building height, traffic access, overnight parking, landscaping and street trees, fencing, shared use path, building design, lighting, and signage. The Columbus North and Middle thoroughfare plan identifies this portion of problem road as suburban commuter corridor requiring eighty feet of right way. The requested L M. Multi manufacturing district will allow the site to be redeveloped to put a self stored facility as demonstrated by the submitted site plan and building elevations. The plan recommends village residential land uses for this location, which may include a vote diversity of commercial and attached residential uses in close proximity to the. Staff considers the proposed self self stored facility to be consistent with both the land use recommendation and the existing development pattern in the area. Department of Public Service requests adjustment to the site plan to show shared use path connectivity across the residual property to the norm. Upon resolution of the above comments from D P S, state department's recommendation can be revised to full approval. Therefore, state department's recommendation is right now for condition.
Okay, questions? And traffic?
Nothing added to the staff report.
And Chris?
Nothing.
Okay, is anyone here to speak on this case? Three people. Uh, we're. We use city councils. Performance standards. Each of you three. Has three minutes to express yourselves, try not to be redundant. And we'll take in your information and then we'll go back. With the agendas. Okay. Would you like to add anything to the staff's presentation?
You looking at me?
I'm looking at you. And give us your name for the.
Tom Gustaf.
Yeah, Matt Davis.
Yeah. Any other comments to?
No, I think. I think he covered it, and we've been through many, many iterations with the planning staff to make it right so it. It is as required, all to the very finest of detail.
Okay, great. Let's have our speaker speak. If you grab a seat back there at the front row. We'll have them come up to the microphone. State their concerns and then we'll get you back to the microphone.
Great.
Okay, you can be first. Give us your name for the record.
Lori Kiefer. A start?
Start.
Okay. I live at six five nine seven Light Chase on the street directly next to the proposed parcel. And I'm here to ask the commission to not approve the rezoning due to these main concerns. The encroachment of commercial property into an existing residential neighborhood. Specifically, a seventeen hundred and seventeen thousand square foot two stories storage facility within close proximity of hundreds of standalone homes, at least. Five hundred or so. Second concern is allowing this land to be rezoned sets a precedent of allowing limited manufacturing in what is currently a residential parcel on Harlem Road. Should other owners decide to sell like those that did for the apartment. And three, the lack of any traffic study or enhancements to an already busy street. And a very dangerous intersection of Harlem Road and Central College. The traffic there is really bad, and there are not any turn lanes into Rocky Fork Reserve, which is where we live. And we've been told there's no study or plan for that, nor is there one for the existing apartments, which will be approximately three to five hundred cars. Concerns about traffic backing up. Notification was also a concern of mine. Well, nothing can be done about the notification of this three hundred unit apartment building because I don't know your guys'. Measurements for that, but I do know for this current one, it was only like three or four people. Because it's very limited, we were told. This is just what I was told. It's like a hundred or two hundred feet. And it just seems like when a parcel is going to be changed from residential to commercial or manufacturing so close to neighborhoods that you might. Want to spread that notification to the entire neighborhood. It. We didn't know. It impacts a lot of people. Lastly, I just would like you to keep in mind that I was at the Rocky Fork Black Lake Panel Accord meeting, and it was approved, but it was a vote to four to three. And not all members were present. Thank you.
Good. Next speaker.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, my name's Diane Sturm. I live at six oh seven oh Lord and Drive, so I am located in the residential community on Harlem Road. Directly north of the proposed rezoning of approximately four acres from residential to limited manufacturing. I'm here to ask the commission to resist approving application Z twenty four oh five nine. At a minimum, I ask the commission to consider if proposed rezoning fits into the overall development plan for this residential area. At the December Rocky Fork Black Lake Accord panel meeting, a panel member representing Columbus, I think it was David Paul, but I'm not sure about the name. Said that there is currently no development plan in place for the area north of College Central on Harlem where we reside. This contradicts the Department of Building and Zoning Services staff review letter dated December nineteenth that actually references. A plan called the Rocky Fork Black Lake Accord two thousand and three. Which recommends the village mixed-use district for a wide variety of combination of permitted land uses per page one fourteen. Based on that, the staff noted that the land use and the site design was generally acceptable. Or appropriate, I'm sorry. I read the accord. It's an awesome document and shows that very wise people foreshadowed exactly why we're here today. Its founding purpose was to establish long-range planning guidelines to manage future growth and development in the planning area. And to protect, preserve and enhance the quality of life in all participating jurisdictions. The intent of the accord was to bring a unified growth management plan to an area facing the pressures of development and change. And that's why we're here. If the accord is in effect, I believe the parcels included in this rezoning application were actually labeled as village residential. Per page one twenty-four, not page one fourteen that the um other department noted in their letter. The purpose of village residential is to provide the community the civic benefits of traditional neighborhood planning and design. Not village mixed use as referenced in the letter. In addition, the parcels directly north are described as West Village neighborhood. The point is, there was no specific recommendation, as far as I can tell, for commercial land use in this area according to the accord. In fact, it was planned as residential land use. If the accord is not in effect and there is no development plan in place, then isn't it premature to approve rezoning to allow a commercial building? In an otherwise residential area? Your approval of this application from residential to limited manufacturing will be irreversible. You would be approving the first commercial building to invade an otherwise residential area. I'm afraid that allowing this to move forward will set a precedent for future commercial development in our neighborhood. How does the proposed storage unit protect, preserve or enhance our residential neighborhood? It doesn't. How does a commercial building in this area line up with the intent and purpose of the accord? I say it doesn't. I ask that you please take into consideration all these facts when reviewing the application and others. That may seek to build commercial buildings in our residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. And our third speaker, please.
Hey folks, my name's Matt Schimetto. I live at six zero one five Lord and it's same community as my other two neighbors. We direct the north of the um rezone, proposed rezone area. I won't use all couple minutes. I just, um, they really covered pretty much everything I, I was gonna cover if it didn't. The um, one of the uh items that I did some research on were the number of self-storage facilities. In a close proximity to the area where the new one's gonna be built. Google Maps says there's about three within a three-mile radius of where we are. And then I actually went on their websites and I did some um counting for the number of units that are available in each one and I've used kind of like. The default website thing where it says um how many units are left for a certain type of them and. Based off of that, just counting, I'm able to determine there's about two hundred and fifteen available units. In just the Cardinal Self-Storage, which is about a mile south of where we live. At least two hundred and fifteen. Another one, another mile from where we are, it's about a hundred eighty-nine at least available units. Another one has a hundred and six. And then there's, if you expand that radius to six miles, it's about three more self-storage. Facilities in that area, so six-mile radius, six self-storage facilities. I'm wondering if there's a need for another one, especially in a residential zone where a lot of people need to grow and. There is already an accord that's kind of planning for that. So that was my, um, that's the research that I did.
Okay.
Yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, bring, bring the applicants back, please. I'd like you to outline what your buffering is around this use. In our history, the, the. The LM letters aside. Self-storage is a, 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 a contributing factor for multifamily, for people that are in a, in a small. Square footage area to put some of their belongings, maybe they're in transition. And so. That is, has been historically a, a subordinate use to residential living. Nobody wants to go across the railroad tracks or across the other side of town to go back and forth to their storage unit. But. You're, you're a, a different kind of animal. Than now. So what is, what do you have between your building and your property and the people that live around you?
Yeah, so uh on the northwest and south sides, uh the property is, is fenced. Um, and that's primarily what the visual barrier is, if that is your question. Um, I'd like to address some of the comments.
Okay.
If that'd be all right.
Absolutely.
So in regards to whether there's a need because of, for self-storage, because the comment from this last gentleman was that there are all these available units. Well, Cardinal Self-Storage just opened up. And typically before you get to a, a stabilized occupancy in a storage property. Uh, it takes about thirty-six months, thirty to thirty-six months. So naturally. Actually, if that's all the number of units they have, they're leasing that up very quickly. And they will get to some kind of ninety percent physical occupancy, which is very standard. When you look at this market, you do look at the three-mile uh radius from any self-storage and we, we transact across the country. It's a commodity. It's the same wherever you go in any kind of a market. You analyze it the same, same kind of units. And so when we look at this across the country, a saturated market between demand and supply. Is about eight to eight and a half square feet per capita, per person. In this market, it's about four square feet per capita with the, including the facilities that gentleman cited. So that leaves a demand of about two hundred thousand square feet and we go by square footage of net rentable square footage of demand remaining. You have eleven thousand five hundred apartment units in the three-mile radius and there are so many more that are coming on. So, and also when it's described as a commercial use. We're really not. This is a very quiet, very low-traffic kind of facility and we're there to only be an amenity to the surrounding residents. Whether it's the multifamily or any of the single-family users or owners in the area. Anybody can come in the public and store their belongings and we're going to great lengths to make it secure, well-lit. Uh, and, and very, a very safe uh operation. So um. Wanted to mention that. And so the, the lady mentioned, um, you know, how's it gonna, it doesn't enhance or improve the residential area in her opinion. I think the problem that people have is what's, is the multifamily that went in around us. We're contributing basically a nominal amount of traffic. I mean nominal. You, there's hardly any traffic that goes in and out of this. And again, we're an amenity. So we're providing a, a resource for all of those who live around this facility.
Okay, I'd, I'd add, it's not taxing on city services. And then initially, when you were talking about the buffer, I think the residents to the north. Think that this facility is gonna be right next to them. There's a one point eight acre parcel in between this facility and those residences.
To the north.
To the north.
Good point.
And then there's also gonna be screening buffers that the city is requiring. To the south of this property is gonna be four-story um apartment facility. The construction there is people that live on that street can see it's, it's going on now and it's gonna be, it's gonna be um significant. So. We're providing, like Tom said, a, an amenity that um, that's just, you know, useful for the neighborhood and, and for all the apartments and the residences around.
Yeah, Matt, to expand on that, on the south side, I think they have garages lined up as sort of port, porticos or. Uh, covered parking for the, for the apartment users. The west side, which is the three acres that was just sold to that apartment developer, is all retention basin.
And there'll be apartments in retention basin.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then there's still gonna be a buffer of, of trees in the back, um, but there's. Literally, there's gonna be a pond behind those homes that's gonna look like a, a little pond. Uh, which will be their retention basin. So we're not up against those homes at all, as you can see right there.
I see the word fence in here. Do you have a fence or the entire property?
Yeah, on those three sides and then in the front, we have, uh, planning has asked us to put in some, uh, street trees. We have some landscaping identified uh to the west of the um ten-foot-wide, uh, shared access path. Uh, that's the, that's what's happening in the setback between the street and the building.
You do have a sidewalk connector?
Yeah, we, we've, yes, it'll be a ten-foot-wide asphalt connector. And you've even asked us to connect that to the residential. Uh, where the shared use path terminates on the north side of that residual parcel. And we've agreed to make sure that happens. When all the construction's done. We'll take that asphalt, ten-foot-wide asphalt path and run it and connect it. So it'll be continuous and with the, and with the uh. Preferred developments uh to the south will connect into theirs as well.
So full length?
Full length, yeah. What, what happened south of preferred, I'm, I'm down to the corner, I, I don't know about that.
Okay, any, uh, any other comments, questions? All right, I think we see the picture. I think, uh, I'd like to take a, a motion to vote.
Actually, uh, there's updated L text and supplement packets recommendation need to vote on first.
I, I didn't hear you. Oh, the updated.
Yeah, it was a month ago.
I noted that was not dated, so we're gonna date it today.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, need a motion to approve the updated limitation text dated two thirteen twenty-five. Need that motion first. So moved.
So.
Okay, Kay, and uh, all those in favor? Now a motion to vote?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor of the vote?
Right.
Okay, please call the rolls.
Connie Ingerson?
Yes.
Cam McQuaid?
Yes.
Janice Key Shanklin?
Yes.
Maria Conroy?
Um, well, I respect that the, the two thousand and three is a long darn time ago and they should really have an updated plan. I'm gonna vote no to get um. Additionalized and, and out of understanding it was a split though.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Sherri Patterson?
Yes, so you're approved. There will be an information sheet that goes to city council. So that they can look a little deeper into what we did there in the.
When, when will that meeting be?
Generally, it's about a month after tonight.
Okay.
And it'll be, be basically the same format that you just can do.
Great. Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, going on to case number five. Z twenty-four dash zero sixty-nine fifteen oh one Gerard Avenue. Good evening.
Your supplemental packets will find one letter of opposition. The two point three five acre site consists of eight parcels, seven of which are developed for mixed residential development and one undeveloped, all in R four residential district. The applicant also intends to purchase a portion of right away south of Western. The requested AR three apartment residential district will allow for multi-unit residential development with unlimited density. To the north are commercial uses in the U G N one urban general district. To the west and south are mixed residential uses in the A R three apartment residential district. C four commercial district and R four residential district. To the east are an electric substation and manufacturing uses of unmanufactured just. Sites within the planning boundaries of Fifth by Northwest Neighborhood Plan, which recommend medium-density mixed residential land uses. Site is also subject to early adoption of Columbus Citywide Planning Policies Design Guidelines. Site is located within the boundaries of the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission with recommendations for approval. Current council variance C V twenty-four dash one fifty-seven has been filed showing a two hundred and sixty-five unit apartment building. On the submitted site plan building elevations. Variances to reduce the required landscaping and screening, building setback, vision clearance, block coverage, perimeter yard, number of parking spaces. And number of E V and E V capable spaces are included in the request. That request will be heard by city council, considering this development. City department's recommendation, the requested A R three apartment residential district will allow multi-unit residential development with unlimited density. Staff finds the proposed A R three apartment residential district to be consistent with the by Northwest Neighborhood Plan's land use recommendation of boarding density. Staff holds a notice the site's proximity to the West Fifth Avenue and King Avenue corridors, which include mixed use zoning and development patterns, as well as transit access. Following comments from Department of Public Service remain outstanding. Additional information not here to be, have been provided regarding the village landscaping. At Southwest Corner at the intersection of Gerard Avenue and Luntford Avenue. To address staff would be comment concerning potential obstruction of necessary sight lines at this location. While the revised site plan appears to now show sidewalk along Eastern Site Furniture of Western Avenue. The requirement of the Department of Public Service sidewalk and shared use path rules and regulations are applicable for the entire project. It is still requested to verify where revenues proposed to be served, to be serviced privately or that city service would be requested. If city services to be requested, additional requirements will apply. Substantial changes to the site by the need necessary. Upon resolution of the comments above, city's department's recommendation can be for full approval. Apparently, city department's recommendation is for conditional approval.
Thank you. Um, Trapp?
The staff and board are really more for the current council variants. That the applicant is addressing there. With the current city. If there aren't a question, we're definitely not be happy to discuss through.
Brian Ingerson?
No further comments from the board.
Any questions? Would you identify yourself and?
Yes, sir.
What you'd like to talk about?
Um, my name is Erwin Efler. I'm the developer of the project. Currently developing another project in Fifth by Northwest on West Fifth Avenue. Uh, we're excited about the neighborhood and adding to it. We think this would be a great project. And uh, I'm here to ask for your support. Um, I believe everything uh in here um that has been called out, we will easily address and work through with uh the city and the neighbors, so.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak on this uh? Application at fifteen oh one Gerard? Uh, there isn't.
Yeah. Opposition letter that's been addressed.
Yeah, I'm happy to address it. Um, the uh, I'm not, I wouldn't necessarily, if you read it carefully, call an opposition letter.
Very, they are very, you know, it, it just seemed like. These were points that they wanted to make sure were addressed.
I think we can work through all of them. I, I've met the couple. We hope to make their property a, a piece of this project that we couldn't come to terms on price. Um, so I've spent considerable time with them, had coffee with them. Uh, we will um work to. Um, do the things we're already doing, I think, as she kind of alluded to in the interview. Yeah.
A motion to call the vote? So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, call the roll, please.
Cam McQuaid?
Quick question for B J. Based on his response and, uh, and also response to the letter, I mean, I'm satisfied that the condition I approve ought to be. Not approved.
For city departments? Yeah, city departments would be conditional approval. Daniel Moorehead said that the items from public service can be addressed with council variance. Staff's position would be for approval.
Okay.
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Yeah. Janice Key Shanklin?
Yes.
Maria Conroy?
Yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Sherri Ingerson?
Yes. You're approved. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go to case number six, Z twenty-four dash zero sixty, twenty-seven hundred Lockhorn Road.
All right. The, uh, one-point-four-six acre site consists of one undeveloped parcel in the R two residential district. The applicant requests the AR one apartment residential district to allow for a multi-unit residential development at this location. Uh, north of the site is a Columbus Metropolitan Library branch in the R two residential district. South of the site is an undeveloped parcel in the R two residential district. East of the site are single-unit dwellings in the I Institutional District and R two res- uh, and R two residential district. West of the site is a community recreation center in the R two residential district. Concurrent CV twenty-four dash one forty-two includes a site plan demonstrating an apartment complex with up to thirty-five units within four buildings. Variances to building setback, uh, and perimeter yard are included. Uh, that request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at the, this development commission meeting. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Tri-South Neighborhood Plan, uh, which recommends retail commercial land uses at this location. The site is also subject to early adoption of Columbus Citywide Planning Policies, C two P two design guidelines. Uh, site is located within the boundaries of the Far South Columbus Area Commission, whose recommendation is that of approval. The Department of Public Service staff has noted that a right-of-way dedication exception request has been filed for this site and is pending final decision. Staff also notes that the proposed access point to Faber Avenue, uh, shown on the site plan, uh, that is, uh, included with, uh, CV twenty-four dash one forty-two will need to be revised prior to city council as it interferes with an existing access point. Uh, the Columbus Multimodal Thoroughfare Plan identifies Lockhorn Road as a suburban community connector requiring one-hundred feet of right-of-way from center line.
That should be fifteen.
Uh, city department's recommendation is that of conditional approval. Uh, the requested AR one residential district will allow multi-unit residential development that while inconsistent with the Tri-South Neighborhood Plan's recommendation of, uh, retail commercial land use at this site. Uh, this is mitigated by the acknowledgement of the site's existing residential zoning, adjacency to single-unit residential uses to the east, and the plan's recognition of the Lockhorn Road corridor as the geographic heart of the community with an existing mix of uses. The Department of Public Service has noted that a resolution to both the right-of-way dedication request and the proposed access point to Faber Avenue will need to be demonstrated prior to going to city council. On completion of the outstanding comment from the Department of Public Service, city department's recommendation can be for full approval.
Okay, um, what needs to happen to that?
We, we worked with the applicant to reach a station, um, to design that access point. Um, and that's going to be addressed with the current council variance allegation.
Okay, and that will be handled within the next few weeks, right? Okay, uh, while we're on the subject, Chris, any comments?
No further comments from anyone.
Okay, is anyone here to speak regarding case number six on Lockhorn Avenue? There's no one here.
Yeah, David, David Hodge, attorney for the applicant. Uh, even though it's an apartment residential zoning, my client in this case intends to build, uh, townhouse products, so it's for-sale product. Um, in an area of town that really could stand to see this kind of development, uh, an area commission super supportive of us along the way and, uh, pretty, pretty clean commentary from, from planning and zoning, certainly understand we have some final wrinkles to iron out with, uh, traffic management, and we will do so as we make our way to city council.
Now, are these are condos for sale, not apartments for rent?
These are gonna be townhouses for sale.
Okay.
Not apartments for rent. Is my, is my client's plan, you know, zoning doesn't really speak to that, but that is their plan.
Okay. Okay, any, uh, any questions or comments? Okay, anything you can do to expedite getting all these loose ends bundled up before going to city council?
We absolutely will. They won't let me go to city council unless I have the, unless I have the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. So we're, we're way down the path with, with Daniel and his team, and we'll finish that.
They have those capable?
They do.
Okay, I need a motion to take a vote. So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? Yeah, okay, please call the roll.
Janice Keyshanklin?
Yes.
Maria Conroy?
Yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Johnny Werson?
Yes.
Dan Muque?
Yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes, you are approved.
Thank you.
Okay, case number seven. Z twenty-four day zero sixty-five forty-two forty Hamilton Square Boulevard.
The one-point-nine-eight acre site consists of one undeveloped parcel in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant requests the LR one Limited Apartment Residential District to allow development of a forty-eight-unit apartment complex as demonstrated with the submitted site plan and building elevations. Uh, north and west of the site are warehouses and office space in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. South and east of the site are multi-unit residential developments in the AR twelve Apartment Residential District. Concurrent CV twenty-four dash one forty-nine has been filed requesting variances to reduce the perimeter yard and to increase the height of detached garages. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Southeast Land Use Plan, which recommends the Employment Center land use at this location. The site is also subject to complete adoption of Columbus Citywide Planning Policies, C two P two design guidelines. Site is located within the boundaries of the Greater Southeast Area Commission, whose recommendation is that of approval. The limitation text includes use restrictions to the maximum number of dwelling units allowed and includes supplemental development standards addressing perimeter yard and attached garage height. Additionally, the text includes commitments to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan and building elevations. Division of Traffic Management has indicated that relocation of the van accessible parking space will be required prior to final site blocks. City, uh, department's recommendation is that of disapproval. Uh, the requested LR one Limited Apartment Residential District will allow the site to be developed with a forty-eight-unit apartment complex. The requested LR one district is inconsistent, however, with the Southeast Land Use Plan's recommendation of employment center uses at this location. The proposed LR one district is residential only in nature and does not include any employment-focused component.
Okay, uh, Dan, traffic issues?
Nothing to add to this, definitely.
Chris?
As noted, uh, planning is not in support.
Okay, uh, I got a question on it. Is there anyone here to speak regarding case number seven on, uh, Hamilton Square Boulevard? No one here to speak? Okay, Mike, I have a question, let me just pop it off. You have a very awkward piece of ground here. I mean, incredibly awkward. And to put an office building or some other commercial use with jobs, I think would be a far stretch. And I think that's why this piece of property remains on the market. It's, it's an obtuse, varied, trapezoidal-looking property that limits. And even the most creative people like John here would have a difficult time with it. So.
Chair?
Yes.
Just, I mean, the whole shape is odd.
Yeah.
I, I think all, and yet, a, a number of those other ones have commercial on there. And, you know, are in the, the zone. So I, I think all of it is.
I see a rectilinear layout on all those, all those ninety-degree angle uses and the setbacks in performance requirements for any usable commercial use would really leave a, a minimum footprint.
Yes, I'm just looking at the one by the side of it, but yeah, I, I.
I mean, the one north of it's generally a rectangular use with a curved front edge, but this piece,
I, I'm.
As an architect, we all, these, these two guys beside me, what do a client, what does a client do? He says, hey, what can you fit on this? You've got a very good answer.
Say the whole site is a log ball, so.
I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying. The other part of this is, is that you created a almost a boulevard situation with the residential apartments across, which was very comfortable. You know, it, it's, was residential across from residential. And I, I don't have any problems with that at all.
If you, uh, if you.
We'd be happy to add something to the conversation.
You, you probably need to get your snowplow the day that the snow falls and, and, uh, break your leaves and spend a lot of money taking, uh, create those kind of jobs.
We, we're in contract, yeah, we're in contract with this piece of property with the developer that did the entire development. The Murphy family Mid-Ohio Development actually developed this whole entire Hamilton Square property. We bought the property across the street, which is the Lakeside Village Apartments from the Murphy family a couple of years ago, developed that. That property was out in front of our clubhouse, which is along the right-hand side, see on this plan on the right-hand side. Uh, the Murphys tried to space plan this exact piece of property for, they were gonna build a maintenance garage for their development purposes. They couldn't find a use or, and essentially space planning this use for that particular maintenance garage only. Been on the market since nineteen ninety-eight for sale. Of course, had no buyers, so we thought maybe a good opportunity to add phase two to Lakeside Village Apartments, which is this, these two buildings. These two buildings will have access to the clubhouse across the street, the amenities, and so on and so forth. So we thought it was a great, and then also, you know, kind of a buffer for our development against the high intense commercial uses. On the top side is Kimlon, um, you know, which is their fertilizing company, of course, they're not manufacturing fertilizers. All they're doing is running service calls from there. And the left side is a commercial property that is a, a real estate agency. And the surrounding uses are, you know, there's a self-storage, there's a couple of service garages and that kind of. But most of the development entirely surrounding these commercial uses is residential. So there's, uh, one-story condominiums for sale, one-story condominiums for rent, two-story apartments, three-story apartments, and so on. So this, this area is kind of a eclectic, uh, development in central Ohio, and it's, um, and believe it or not, even though the Lakeside Village Apartments is kind of hard to find, we rented that place up in six months. So it was very, uh, you know, well-fermed as far as area and, uh, housing.
Uh, that was Joe Thomas with Metro Development.
Sorry.
I'm Jeff Brown with Smith and Hale. Um, I, I think Joe hit all the high points. Just two other items. You noticed in terms of arrangement of the buildings, we did the C two P two by putting the buildings out front and the parking for our garages and, and the rear. Uh, we did present this to the area commission, and they had no problem with this development. Again, it's another forty-eight units of affordable housing for the city tied in already with a successful multifamily development directly across the street. And you'll see that there are sidewalks all in this area, so there'd be plenty of pedestrian connections going back and forth.
Okay, I think, uh.
Can I as well?
Yes, please.
Actually, it, it's kind of just staff and the planning, and that's, I mean, we've seen a number of cases where you all differed from the plan. Why now? Why now is this, okay, we're keeping, this is, the plan says this, and we're staying with it. So I just, I, I want to understand the character of it because three cases ago, it was the plan said this, but we're, we're okay with it.
Yeah, so in this case and others where employment or industrial are recommended, uh, we, uh, as a policy, check in with our economic development staff to see if this is considered to be viable or, you know, attractive to protect as, as those uses. And we did that in this case, and that was the decision.
Okay, so.
So in some cases, we can depart from it if there's mitigating factors. Obviously, they are meeting the C two P two, uh, standards as far as urban design along the front edge and placing the buildings out front, hiding parking. So in every, every other respect, it's supportable, but the land use is the fundamental question.
Okay, so it was that economic development folks said we believe this to be viable as a commercial?
And, and. And, and on occasion, it's also based between, um, industrial-type uses and, uh, and residential neighbors, as we saw downtown here with, uh, the Roker Bakery.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, is there noise impacts, et cetera, that, that are concerns? We also, the far east side with, uh, development out there is similar, similar issues. How do we maintain distance and separation from these types of uses?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I think it's also true that any city rightfully in common sense tries to balance how their tax base based for street maintenance and silver maintenance, and you can't have all homes, you can't have all industry, and when you have a piece of property that shape, it's pretty hard, even though it's noteworthy to try to share some of these costs. So there, there's people, and those apartments don't have to pay for the fire department. This is better, highest and best use is what we're looking at here. In this case, not universally, but in this case. Okay, that being said, is there any other comments or questions? Please give me a, uh, motion to vote. So moved.
Seven.
Okay, all those in favor? Please call the roll.
Maria Conroy?
I'm gonna be supportive of planning and vote now. I do see the value of the use, though, I understand it.
Amanda Golden?
I'm gonna go, yes.
Johnny Werson?
Yes.
Dan Muque?
Yes.
Janice Keyshanklin?
Yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes, you are approved.
Thank you very much for your time.
I am channeling, why? I'm gonna go. She, she may be gone, but she's.
It's like that you were up next to the border.
I, I know, I was on.
Okay, case number eight has been tabled. So we will go to case number nine. Case number nine is Z twenty-four day zero twenty-eight thirty-seven seventy-five Trayview Road.
Please see your supplemental packets for, uh, two letters of opposition, as well as a dialogue between the applicant, the city, and the West Sciota Area Commission regarding, uh, building elevations. The eighteen-point-three acre site consists of nine parcels. Six of the parcels are developed with single-unit dwellings, while the remaining three parcels are undeveloped. All nine parcels are pending annexation, uh, into the city of Columbus, after which they will be assigned the R Rural District. The applicant requests the AR one apartment residential district and the C three commercial district to allow for the establishment of a mixed-use development. So the north of the site is a golf course in the R one residential district. To the east are commercial uses and single-unit dwellings located in Franklin Township in the Community Services District and Rural District, respectively. To the west and south are single-unit dwellings in the LR two Limited Residential District. Concurrent CV twenty-four dash oh eighty-four has been filed to allow the site to be developed with a mixed-use development, including an apartment complex containing up to two-hundred-and-eighty units, five-thousand-three-hundred square feet of eating and bringing establishment uses, and eight-hundred square feet of outdoor patio with reduced development standards as demonstrated by a site plan and building elevations. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Trayview Roberts Area Plan, which recommends open space, mixed-use neighborhood, and very low-density residential land uses at this location. The site is also subject to early adoption of Colum- uh, Columbus Citywide Planning Policies, C two P two, design guidelines. The site is located within the boundaries of the West Sciota Area Commission, whose recommendation is that of approval. The Department of Public Service has indicated that before proceeding to city council, the applicant will need to receive approval of, uh, the pending traffic study and provide documentation that Franklin Township is supportive of an access point onto Britton Avenue as shown in the site plan with concurrent CV twenty-four dash oh eighty-four. The Columbus Multimodal Thoroughfare Plan identifies Trayview Road as a suburban community corridor requiring a hundred-twenty feet of right-of-way. Um, the requested AR one apartment residential district and C three commercial district will allow a multi-unit residential development and commercial uses that are compatible with the density and development standards recommended in the Trayview Roberts Area Plan. The Department of Public Service has stated that an approved traffic study will need to be completed and documentation of Franklin County's approval of the, uh, proposed access point onto Britton Ave- Avenue provided prior to this case. point onto Britton Ave, Avenue provided prior to this case attorney reports to the council. Upon completion of the outstanding comments from the Department of Public Service, city department's recommendation can be for full approval, but as it stands, city department's recommendation is that of conditional approval.
Okay, any questions of the state? Dan Traffic.
Nothing to add to the staff report.
What, what's the status of the traffic report at this time?
A revision of the traffic study was recently submitted, as I just indicated, due for review.
Okay. Chris?
No further comments?
Okay, is anyone here to speak regarding case number nine? I see one hand, only one hand? Just, just one, okay, one speaker. David?
If I, if I may, I have a handout I'd like to share with the commission and a few things, and then like to reserve some time to be responsive to, uh, speakers. So I know this was just on your screen, but I want to do a little bit of a deeper dive into the, uh, land use plan recommendation for the property and, um, as you can imagine, I see this come up in, in every way, shape, and form, and observed one of the earlier cases where there was some discussion about the, um, you know, some analysis of the Rocky Fort Black Lake Accord as it related to the, to the storage. And, um, the particular plan, um, in effect for this part of town is the Travee Roberts Area Plan. Staff had a portion of that up on the screen a second ago, but my handout walks through that in a little more detail. And I think that, um, it's important for the development commission to, to roll up some sleeves and, and kind of get into the, exactly what this plan says. So the first page of the handout, if you notice at the bottom right-hand corner, I drew a hard black box around the property, uh, that we're dealing with tonight. The, 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 the vast majority of this property is in that pink area there in the middle, and then over on the western edge of the property, uh, is a green area. Uh, what those two things indicate is that the land use recommendations under the Travee Roberts Area Plan for the property are mixed-use neighborhood and park open space. So if you flip over to the next page, um, I've highlighted there the, the, the recommendation for the mixed-use neighborhood, and it's twenty thousand, uh, square feet per acre of commercial, uh, or residential density, uh, residential at a, at a density of between sixteen and forty-five dwelling units an acre. I noted at the bottom of the page there that the residential component of this is fifteen-point-six acres, we have two-hundred-and-eighty units, so our density here is nineteen-point-two dwelling units an acre. We are on the low end of the spectrum of the residential recommendation, uh, for development of this property. Flipping over to the next page, this, uh, is, is kind of a, 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 a plan perspective, uh, going a little deeper into the San Margarita neighborhood. Again, I drew the box there, it's a blow-up of what we just talked about with the pink and the green and the neighborhood commercial, uh, and the open space, and just a couple of notes, um, specific to the San Margarita sub-area. Uh, recommends future residential development to be consistent with the recommended densities indicated in the future land use plan, so that's residential between sixteen and forty-five dwelling units an acre. It states that additional residential infill is supported. It states that pedestrian and bicycle connections should be promoted, and it also states that new development and redevelopment and expansion proposals should be consistent with the sub-area's proposed land use map, neighborhood, commercial, and park. The last page, uh, again, a portion of the San Margarita blow-up, uh, talks about the development style and the development pattern, and it, um, uh, recommends an urban commercial overlay design standard that this commission has seen so many times that planning has just about everybody do, which means moving the building edge up to frame the edge of the right-of-way, often with some pedestrian infrastructure in front of that building edge, as opposed to, um, road, pedestrian infrastructure, big parking lot, and then building. So that's, that's the urban commercial overlay, which is what we've done here. So if someone could go back over to the site plan, and I don't know, guys, what all you have in your packet, but yeah, this, this, this is perfect. So, okay, Sheriff, this Patrick, if I can over and point here.
Absolutely, yes.
So referring back to that plan with the, with the pink, the mixed-use neighborhood and the green, the park. So we have a proposal before the commission tonight that is squarely in accordance with the longstanding land use recommendation, uh, under the, the Travee Roberts Plan. Is there, does it have another plan in here at all, Joe? Is this?
It's just the, uh, elevations.
Okay, and so I, I want to mention to the commission that this, um, we filed this application on July first, and we've been, um, through those last however many months that is, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven days, uh, working hard on this proposal, and this is not by any stretch of the imagination, the first iteration of the site plan that we submitted. When we originally submitted this, uh, request, it was for three-hundred-and-seventy-five units with some commercial, uh, through the last two-hundred-and-thirty-some days with, 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 uh, great collaborative conversations with neighbors, great collaborative conversations with the West Sciota Area Commission Zoning Committee, uh, and the full commission, uh, we arrived at a reduction in the density down to two-hundred-and-eighty units. Uh, we arrived at all sorts of things along the way, may, maybe we'll get into that here later, but the red here is some fencing perimeters. We're working with recreation and parks on the disposition of this property. Uh, to them, these buildings were initially four stories, we took those down to three. This building and this building were originally three stories, we took those down to two. This amenity space used to be over here, there was some, um.
Mr. Hunter, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, we, we do have your presentation that you, uh.
That's okay, I, this is, this is, well, yeah, so let's go back to the site plan and I'll touch on matches for a second. So the, um, so these used to be three-story buildings, again, went down to two. This amenity space used to be in other locations, some discussion about impact of an outdoor amenity space with residential, uh, neighbors, and so that got pushed up into the center of the site, and, and earlier iteration had some townhouse units in here. So there's been, over the last, since July first, there's been really a significant, um, collaboration, uh, my client, Mike Amicon, being responsive to the neighborhood. He happened to grow up on the east side of Hake here, just east of the property. And so, you, you know, we, we've done, we've done, um, everything we can to be responsive, um, to the neighborhood. Again, two-hundred-and-thirty days, I, I checked earlier and, uh, I did a zoning, you know, this, this isn't, this isn't the day and age of the expedited residential zoning process in the, in the city, we're eight months into it, eight months. Uh, I did one, uh, in seven, in sixty-seven days, uh, about a year ago. Um, and so, you know, you, you'll hear from, from, from a neighbor or two, which is, which is great, we're, we're committed to continuing to work with neighbors always. Now, there's one little hiccup that I want to, that I want to hit on here, and that is, let's flip over to the architecture, if you would. Um, when we came through the West Sciota Area Commission process, originally, actually, the application that we filed with the city was originally this architecture and this architectural inspiration. Um, many in the neighborhood did not like care for that architecture, did not care for four-story buildings up on Travee Road, told us that it was too commercial, too institutional, too industrial, and so we went a very different direction with the architecture. Uh, let's flip, maybe just down to the next. Yeah, so that was, that was, that was an initial proposal. Next, initial proposal, initial proposal, initial proposal. To the next. Uh, this was a modified, uh, proposal to go more in a residential direction. Let's go to the next one. This is, this is where we ended with the West Sciota Area Commission, and in the intervening weeks since we concluded our process with the West Sciota Area Commission, the, you know, not only is it, is it an iterative process as you come through and you work with neighbors and you work with city planning, it's also internally an iterative process as you're working with builders and you're working with architects and, and, and you're working with investors. And so as, after the area commission meeting to tonight, um, my client and his team came to the conclusion that this architecture is not architecture that can, that can in the end be delivered. And so we have submitted, and, and, and are going to go back hopefully and meet with the area commission on this in the coming weeks, we've submitted some alternative architecture, which should be the last one in your packet there, Joe. Nope, that's, um, that's existing, existing. So that is a, is an inspirational, um, exhibit. This is a, this is, this is a development, uh, by several of the same group of developers and investors, this is up at, at Central College Road, uh, also came through Rocky Fort Black Lake Accord, that one, and so that is the aesthetic that we seek to achieve. Now, our obligation when we work with planning is to, um, work within the parameters of the Travee Roberts Area Plan. It's also to, uh, work with staff through an iter, iterative process and, and adhere to the C2P2 standards, uh, for the architecture and trails and, and parks and all, all of the things that C2P2 does, uh, which, which we've done, uh, which we've done here and which this, this most recent series of architecture does meet the city's C2P2 guidance with reference to development, um, for the property. I've talked too much, I will stop there and stand aside and come back up and hopefully have a few additional things to add.
Okay, we need three speakers. Any speakers? Put your hands up, just one, okay?
Could you put that slide back up, please?
One would you like?
The last one that comes up.
Could you give us your name for the record?
First one?
Yes, thank you. Board members, I'm Rita Cabral, I am the West Sciota Area Commission Zoning Chair. Now, I intended to be at this development commission meeting, uh, as it was scheduled, only to tell you that at our last meeting, after we approved the project, I wanted to make sure that it was on record that we were notified that there is a possible cemetery on this property. That was the only reason I was planning on coming to this meeting. On the eleventh hour, we get notification of the changing of the design of these buildings and the color, and all through the process of our negotiating, of which we've had approximately sixty residents coming to our meetings. Now, to get that many residents to come to a project, to be concerned, is commendable to the community for their efforts in this project. It is also commendable to the developer to listen to us and make the changes during the process. The first presentation was made at an area commission meeting in May, and it was very vague. We have had three zoning meetings with this developer, September, October, and January. Now, this week, we are notified of a change of design and color. This picture was not even sent to us, and therefore I am here objecting to the way this has been presented to us. Now, it has been explained to me that your committee does not consider the design and color at all. But as a commissioner and a zoning committee, for the residents, what we go through is an application comes into us with the zoning application and with the council variance, and to expedite things, we look at the whole picture. Those two applications are sent to planning. We come in here and it is separated. It is not fair to the community. It is not fair to the community the way this is being presented. As I said, we worked diligently, three very hard meetings during that period of time. And one of them happened to be the second meeting where it was pushed on us to take a vote, and for a project this size, that was not reasonable. So I am objecting for the community and for the, our area commission, the way this has been handled, and this morning, we got an email asking to be on our agenda. We're supposed to just drop everything and be at their whim to put it on our agenda for it to be reviewed? I'm sorry, but I just had to let you know what we go through. Any questions for me?
I actually, I do, and that is, um, so are you, are you representing then the commission with your objection, or is that your objection?
No, I am, uh, between the, uh, commission chair and the zoning chair, we are objecting to the way this additional change has been made. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
You, you did mention you had a cemetery beyond the site.
Excuse me, could you speak a little louder, please?
You did mention that you had or you saw, you were informed that there, there is a cemetery on, on the sides.
We have been informed this, yes.
Is that verified?
It has not been verified yet, the developer said he would handle that, and it needs to just be on public record that that information has been presented to us. I mean, I, I, I'm, the developer has been helpful all through the process here, but this final change, it's, the community has looked at this project very closely. They have asked for the change in design and everything, so it will fit into the community. I'm sorry, this is not what they accepted, and as I said before, this is the first time I'm seeing this picture. So you can see where the frustration is coming from.
I have a question, what did this look like before? It looks like it is now.
There is a black and white picture that, all right, this is what, this is the final project that we approved. Now, bring up the black and white that has been shifted through very quickly. No, there's a black and white. Not that one, no, no. It was, it was at the beginning of the presentation when you started. That, that, there it is. Now, this has been sent to us. Not only was it sent to us, it was sent to us with somebody else's plan on it. It wasn't even mocked up for our community or for the, our project.
Was it, was it sent to you that this is what was going to be on the site or as an information, or as an inspiration for their design?
Say, say that.
Is it sent to you that this was the final design for the site?
Yeah.
Or was it sent to you that this is an inspiration for the, for the design?
A change, a change that was presented to, uh, the planning committee. It wasn't given to us, it was given to the planning committee, and then just an email was sent to us. No proposal to set up a meeting to address these changes.
Okay, I think, I think we, uh, let's, let's get the advocate back here and let's have. Okay, I think, I think we, let's, let's get the advocate back here and ask some pointed questions.
I would be happy to answer any questions after that.
Okay. Is this what you presented at the first meeting?
No, no, the first, the, the, what we presented at the first meeting was the four-story flat roof building that was, that was in the other slide deck. That was the very first meeting. I guess there was a, I forgot, there was an informal meeting in May and then the, the process formally started after, after the July filing. This exhibit, this is, this is an example, that's actually the same architecture of the photograph that I, that was, that I showed there at the end. And Ms. Cabral is correct, this is what was sent. I didn't send the photograph, I went out and took the picture at lunchtime today to see what, it actually looks way better in a photograph than it does in, in this rendering. And so, yes, we, we confirmed a, after the West Scioto Area Commission meeting, voted to support the other architecture. The internal investor group, development team, said they wanted to change directions architecturally. And so.
I'm sorry, when did this happen?
This happened.
What was the change made?
Late, late, late last week, late last week. So I submitted that in an email to the city planning staff to ask if it met C two P two. Is this consistent with the, with the, architecturally, with the, with the direction that's, that's appropriate under planning's guidance? I got feedback that yes, it was. I then called the chairperson of the area commission. Rita is the chairperson of the zoning committee. I called the chairperson of the commission, Kristen McKinley, had a 20 or 30 minute conversation with her, followed up that conver, conversation with the, with an email to her of, of this, as well as the final exhibit that was, that the commission reviewed. And Kristen took that back internally with, with Rita and they, they said, David, that architecture is not acceptable to us. And concluding, we'd like you to, we'd like you to come back. And so we've asked to come back. This is tied with the council ver, I mean, it's all intermingled and people are absolutely right. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a rezoning and it's, this council variance is a companion piece. It's, it's really the Columbus equivalent of a planned district, so, so these things are married together. And, and, and that's not going to be the final architecture. It's going to be, we hope, similar to that. There can be some, some, some color modifications and, you know, the other interesting things that architects do when they, when, when they put these things together. But, but, but this is the building that, that my client wants, wants to go with. Now, all that aside, and it's, do I, am I happy to be here in this situation? I'm not. You know, in a perfect world, we, we incorporated this architecture, you know, two, three months back and, and had this in our presentation materials when we came to a final vote at West Scioto Area Commission. That didn't happen. I wish it did. The last 48 hours of my life would have been a lot better now, I'd have slept better at night, but, but it's not what happened and it's unfortunate. We are absolutely going to go back and meet with the West Scioto Area Commission. We're going to present some architectures, architectures similar to this, and we're going to ask them to vote. If they vote no, we're still going to go on to city council with the council variance component of this application, with all of the other host of commitments that we've made along the way in our collaboration with the neighborhood. So now I'm going to go back to the very beginning and the land use plan handout that I gave you. We're talking about property that's recommended for up to 45 dwelling units an acre residential. We're at 19. We're talking about property that is recommended to be a park in an open space. We have the west side of his property, property is a park in an open space, a large portion of which, five and a half acres or so, that will be donated to the City of Columbus Recreation and Parks to really help them with the, with a, with a, an important gap in their long-term plans to have a trail network extending from Raymond Memorial Golf Course on the north, the trade view, all the way down this creek corridor down to the east side of Hague. And so, listen, I've been doing this a long time, I wish it, I wish it was different, but it's not. And, and we're here and we've been at it in an expedited process for eight months. And the property owners that, that, that are selling the property have been holding on for eight months. And there is, there is the need for, for the development team to, to move on through the remainder of the process and, and, and we absolutely will. I hope it's next Thursday. We've requested next Thursday to go to the West Scioto Area Commission, full commission and ask for a vote on some modified architecture. We have, we have hashed and, and rehashed and rehashed hashed, re-rehashed the, the, the site plan. And the site plan, nothing else is going to change, it's simply the aesthetic. And we want to work with the neighborhood towards the aesthetic. But at the end of the day, the aesthetic that we have in the package meets the C G P two guidance in the, in the city planning. I'll stop talking.
All right, let, let me make a couple of observations here. First, we have a question. When did you make the change? Put the appropriate two-story building where you had a taller building. Three-story buildings, you put the four-story buildings out on the street?
I don't know, 60 days ago or so.
In the center?
60 days or so ago.
Did that get?
Yes, sir, it did.
Shown to the neighborhood?
Everything, the only, the only thing is the, is the architectural aesthetic that is unresolved.
Regarding that subject, we, we have rarely gotten into that ever in our operations here. We, we choose between, is it appropriate or is it not appropriate? Now, I can understand where the neighbors would like to know what colors you're using and, and get involved as your design partner, but that rarely happens in the City of Columbus, rarely. It's happened a few times. And sometimes it's just offered as an enticement. But the fact that you put the right-height buildings in the center means that, that the view lines are much better. This, this picture here, dominant, the dominant feature here is this big black roof. Down on the ground in the parking lot, you don't even see that roof.
You don't experience the world from a drone, I've said.
We don't see it. So, so those are significant changes because they affect life. You don't have too many buildings, you don't have any buildings with balconies overlooking neighbors in their privacy of their yards that I saw. You have, you have, we talked earlier tonight about a geometric site, that very awkward combination of shapes and skinny points and wide points. And you built a nature preserve along that creek, which takes away the impact of a lot of, you know, which is commended. I, I am troubled sometimes by almost every case comes up where the traffic has not caught up. Even you started in May, it's rare that traffic has caught up with the, the application process. And you have too many jurisdictions, you have state highway, you have you, a county line, you have, you have all kinds of people have their, their hand on the on the question, and it delays. So we have, we, we joke that we have the open checkbook negotiation where if you want our approval, you have to agree to give the traffic department whatever they ask for. They want seven traffic lights, you've got to do it. If you don't, you have to come back here. So you, you've managed to steer clear of that. And, and my gut feeling is, is this, this thing fits in a very difficult puzzle in, in a pretty realistically well-performing way, way under the 45 units an acre flag that's waving. And we have, we, this development commission has been, I would say eagerly encouraged to be receptive of higher density rather than lower density in certain locations, not in every location, because we're behind the curve. So it, it's, I'm hearing two different stories. I'm hearing, we did talk to the zoning commission. I'm, I'm curious how the zoning commission that you showed up, voted yes, and, and now they, they are objecting to the fact that you made some, some tweaks to the design, but not the use, the use is improved. There's nobody complaining about the use. We're here to talk about the use, is it appropriate or is it not appropriate? And I invite any of my component, my compadres to speak.
You've done some good things and made some nice moves in the way you're developing this. But you've been dating for eight months. You've built up this sort of trust in the process and this is like, oh, sorry, got other plans. We got to vote tonight. Sorry for the rush. So kind of the goodwill and transparency and public trust that you had is overdrawn by Ms. Cabral, obvious discomfort with the situation. I mean, I, I don't know how you conditionally worked this out, but you have to make a commitment to them to have an equal input into the design. You know, I see a big difference between that elevation and the last picture that you took. There are different animals. You know, I would only be guessing, but it seems like it's a very traditional neighborhood around there. They seem to like gable roofs. They seem to like the kind of scale change that, that smaller inset cables give on an elevation and that an architect should be sensitive to that. Now, we're not supposed to say beans about the architecture, but we all do. So I'm just troubled by, you know, you know, I understand the speed of development and the cost. And it's very frustrating a lot of times and you've touched all the bases until you got around, you know, five steps from home plate and now there's a question of whether you've actually touched it or not. So try and make this so resolvable before you go to council.
That, that is our aim, that is our aim. And, and we, we said throughout the process, Mike Amicon said throughout the process, not only are we going to go back and include this architectural issue, but Mike is committed to go back repeatedly through construction and through the remainder of the process to check in on, on, with the commission on what's going on. And, and I'll reiterate to, to this Development Commission, this is a, this is the first time for me. This is, this is the first time for me and I, and I, you know, I don't like being here like this. It's, it's unfortunate for me, it's unfortunate for, for Mike and his team, certainly unfortunate for the, for the West Scioto Area Commission. But we are committed here on the record and in writing also to the city and, and to them to come back and iron, ironing through this architectural issue with them.
Let me ask a question, it's, today is February 13th.
60 days is the answer.
Okay, because you're going to have basically, you have two meetings with the area commission.
60 days is the answer.
One to hear them out, one to make changes or some clarifications. And I think a lot of these are just clarifications. And, you know, most people say, well, how, what's the percentage of brick? Because brick was durable and vinyl siding isn't. So, so that's where, that's where the rubber touches the road on some of these in-the-weeds discussions. We almost never get into that part.
I hated to have to get into it tonight, but it's, it's an issue and we needed to take it head-on.
All right, so if we, if we put the blinders on and do what our mandate says and say, is this an appropriate use or is it not an appropriate use? Somebody else is going to deal with the variance, unique details. What kind of brick, what kind of balcony, what kind of, kind of architectural tweaks? That's, that's out of our responsibility and into the variance process. If we vote on this and, and whatever happens, happens in, in the, in the taking of the vote, you think you'd, you'd be ready to go forward to city council in 60 days? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying that, that we could feasibly be at city council under, under the present timeline by, in 30, in 30 days from now, by, before March 15th.
And you could have two meetings with, with the area commission, one, one here?
If we, if we go back, if, depending upon, depending upon what the area commission says, if we go back through a full cycle of the area commission, then we can't get to council until May. So we lose, well, that, well, it, it, it just depends on, on, on a different, on, on another variable and that's, and that's whether we have to come back to Development Commission or not.
Well, I don't think city council is voting on what color shutters you put on your windows. They're, they're, they are also cut to the quick. Is it appropriate as a land use, does it fit in? Are you, are you playing nice in the sandbox? You, you got this creek, this creek area, this green space that's part that you're leaving untouched in this geometric site? It, that all combines into whether it achieves appropriateness or it just doesn't hit it. We're going to have to vote on that and then you've got to go forward, whatever that vote is. All right, that's understood. Anybody have any questions or comments or clarification to that approach? Okay, we need a, a motion to take a vote.
Motion to vote?
Janice, Ben?
Seven.
All those in favor? Okay, please call the roll.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
John Ingerson?
Yes.
Ken Luque?
I'm reluctant to vote yes, because the issue of the cemetery has not been answered.
That's a, that is a state, you know, regulated issue that they'll have to do regardless of the zone. It's not something that the City of Columbus even regulates. So it's not, to me, it's not an issue. If they find something, they're going to have to deal with it.
I, I would know.
We, we have hit that before on a piece of property on Hayden Run where we weren't allowed to get involved occasionally.
Janice, can you say what you know?
No.
You voting on it?
I'm voting no.
Rita Conroy?
Yes.
And Sherif Spencer?
Yes. Okay, so this information sheet will go to city council. You have a four to two vote. There are reasons for that and you have a lot of details to clear up and a lot of goodwill to build back. And I think you can do it. And I, I, I think you've done the right thing in your overall plan, you're off the, it's got there, but you have a lot of work to do.
We, we do have a lot of work to do. I'll, I'll go on record as, as, as making a, a formal apology to the West Scioto Area Commission that it played out this way. They have our commitment to come back and iron through this architectural issue and I'm optimistic that they're going to like what they see once we submit and have those meetings. And thank you all very much.
Okay. Case number 10. You okay? Case number 10, Z 24 day, zero 24, 4970 Lindor Drive.
Chair?
Yes, please. Well, let's wait till.
Wait, we're all done.
Are, are any of those sheets passed to you, Amanda?
The sheets?
So.
They're unfinished.
Okay.
Chair, I'm, I'm wanting to be able to be able to speak about the speakers as they have a manager.
Okay, how many speakers do we have that would like to? Okay, we have three. You've been around this track before. Three speakers, three minutes each. Is there an area commissioner here? All right, you speak separately. Three other speakers are invited to. All right, you speak separately. Three other speakers are invited to speak, three minutes each. City council will give you the exact same procedures. So make your time count. Don't be redundant. And give us your sense of what you'd like to see on this front. Let's wait till Kay gets back here so you get the full opinion. Okay, start with the staff report, Alex.
So, hey Dave, I think I do have the updates.
Okay. Chair. Oh, okay. I didn't know we had two. We're dying now to call it. Okay, we're good.
Your supplemental package will find fourteen letters of opposition and one letter of support. This case was heard and tabled at the January nine point five developing commission meeting. Revisions since that meeting included an updated site plan showing additional landscaping, a reduced parking setback along the door drive, and updated limitation tech reflecting those changes. Both documents stated that were toward point five. Zero point nine two acre site consists of one undeveloped parcel in C four commercial district. The applicant requests the L A R one limited apartment residential district to allow for a twenty-four unit apartment building. To the north and west of the site are single unit dwellings in the S R suburban residential district. To the east is parkland in the C four commercial district and S R suburban residential district. To the south, it's commercial uses in the C four commercial district and single unit dwellings in the S R suburban residential district. Site is within the planned boundaries of the southeast land use plan that recommends mixed use one or less than twenty-four dwelling per acre land use in this location. Site is located within the boundaries of the greater southeast area commission whose recommendation is for disapproval. Limitation fact includes standards for building height, a maximum of twenty-four apartment units, building setbacks, traffic access, landscaping and screening requirements, and commitments developed beside and without, submitted site. Current council variance, C V two four dash zero seven five, has been filed requesting to reduce the required landscaping and screening, parking setback, and number of parking spaces. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered as development commission. City department's recommendation, the requested L A R one limited apartment residential district will allow a twenty-four unit apartment building that is consistent with the southeast land use plan's recommendation on mixed use one or less than twenty-four dwellings per acre land uses at this location. Staff finds submitted site plan and conceptual building elevations to be consistent with Columbus citywide planning policies and design guidelines, and the proposal will further the city's objective in creating more housing. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Any comments? Dan, Chris?
Traffic? No traffic issues.
Okay, Chris?
No further comments.
Okay, uh, we have already, we know we have a area commission and three other speakers. David, give us your name for the director.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Um, my name is Dave Perry. I'm here consulting on this application for uh Tejan LLC. And with me?
My name is Elias Duarte, and I'm the developer.
So January ninth, um, oh, um, my, my apologies. Um, Ron O'Brien is the attorney for the application and he is here and Melanie Wallenberg is consulting on the application also, and she is here. So, um, January ninth, we discussed, um, I, I just want to review briefly. Uh, we discussed that this site, nine tenths of an acre, has been zoned C four since nineteen sixty-three. It initially had, uh, early seventies-ish, had a gas station on it, which closed after Nobixby Road was relocated, clearly because there wasn't enough traffic to support the gas station. Um, the property has been vacant for the last forty-two years. And um the, clearly in forty-two years, there was, there would have been an opportunity to develop this under commercial uses if there had been an interest in doing so and if it was a viable location for a commercial use. In addition to that, we talked about that the C four district allows apartments anyway. They just have to be on the second floor of a building over a ground floor commercial use. So to me, this zoning is really a form issue of whether there's apartments over a ground floor commercial use, um, or, or a three-story building with two floors of apartments over a ground floor commercial use, or a two-story building that has been intentionally designed to be compatible with the neighborhood and particularly the height. The, the neighborhood is one-story, one-and-a-half-story, and two-story buildings for the most part. Uh, this is supported by the Southeast Area Plan. Uh, the proposal is supported by Southeast Area Plan in terms of use and density. And so on January ninth, um, the discussion and direction from the Development Commission um in requesting that we table the application was to look at the site plan on, on a couple of points in particular. And let's see, Phil, can you put up the current site plan? Yep, there we go. So, uh, for tonight, we're working on a February fourth, twenty twenty-five site plan and February fourth, twenty twenty-five development text. Um, the site plan has been updated to provide uh increased north and east setbacks, ten-foot setbacks. Remember that this site is adjacent to commercially zoned property to the north owned by the Athletic Association. It is undeveloped. It is used just intermittently for seasonal parking for sporting events. Um, and adjacent to some commercial uses to the east that are um appearing pretty dated at this point. Um, so we've provided uh much larger landscaping strips to the north and east, uh, much more landscaping. The building has been reduced in length by four feet to meet the ten-foot increased setback to the north and the twenty-five-foot Lindor Drive setback. Uh, fencing has been added. I committed at the January ninth meeting to, um, to provide the five-foot screening fence that is required for parking lots, even, even though it is not code required in this case. Um, the developer will provide the fencing. So, um, I, I can, I can elaborate on any of those points and happy to do so if you wish, but it would be um a repeat of what you all heard, um, other than Amanda last month.
Okay. All right, let's, let's have our speakers come up and give us what's on their mind and then we'll bring you back up, David.
Good evening.
No, no, come up here for the microphone so we can piss on tape. You'll bring the applicant back up after you speak.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Murray, and I serve on the Greater Southeast Area Commission, and I'm also a small business owner. As a small business owner, I advocate and applaud anyone who takes the leap of faith and is determined to do great things. I also understand the complexities of economic development, and I understand that not all money is good money and not all projects are good projects. Tonight, I want to focus on the economics of this project, not just in dollars and cents, but in the true cost to this community. At a previous meeting, the developers shared that the projected net revenue, I believe it was Ms. Wallenberg said, the projected net revenue from this development will be somewhere in the range of two to three thousand dollars. Whether this figure is monthly or annually, one thing is sure, this is not a significant return on the investment when weighed against the long-term disruption to this community. To put it into perspective, for a project that will increase traffic congestion, compromise pedestrian safety, and permanently alter the character of a well-established neighborhood, we have to ask, is a few thousand dollars in revenue truly worth the cost? The development is not a long-term economic win, neither for the developer nor for our community. Unlike well-planned developments that increase property value, stimulate local business, and foster stability, this proposal does none of that. Instead, it maximizes density while minimizing foresight, adding strain to an already high-traffic area, limiting parking, and critical safety concerns with the children that play in the park next door. As an alternative, because I never show a problem without a solution, we are asking for the possibility of maybe townhouses that can be rented at a market rate, which would provide housing while reduce the stress on our infrastructure, or as been stated earlier, a mixed-use space. Unlike this apartment complex, these alternatives could be economically viable without overburdening our community. I want to be clear, this is not just about zoning. It's a responsible development. When a project does not add lasting value to a neighborhood, when it prioritizes short-term revenue over long-term sustainability, it is not a good project. It's merely a project. The residents in this community deserve better, and so does the developer. Because the reality is if a project like this moves forward and fails to deliver the expected returns, it leads to vacancies, complaints, and long-term maintenance issues. Not just the neighborhood suffers, the developer will suffer as well. So I urge you, is this really the right project in the right place at the right time? Or is it simply a convenient project, an easy project, but not the best project? I ask you to vote against this development. Let's ask for something better for the residents, for the neighborhood, and especially the developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to be the first? Use a commissar, well, over.
I'm Diana Bunning. I'm also on the commissions. And I've also lived in the neighborhood for twenty-five years. We are totally against this. We had to move our commission meeting from the Pride Center to the Gasmyn Church. Then we had to move it from their meeting room into where they have church service because there wasn't enough room to hold the whole neighborhood. Because against this development. These people bought their homes for retirement. They won't, don't want apartments right there. We got apartments on the outside edge of our community. We don't need them in the middle. I also want to go back to the Hamilton Square apartment you almost didn't approve. Now, I'm not one for apartments. I'll get you that. But I approved them a hundred percent because there's nothing else would go on that property. That was the best use for that property right there. This is not the best use for this property. It needs to stay commercial. He can put a commercial building there and rent it. It does not belong, apartments do not belong in the middle of the neighborhood. We had to deal with the bar, getting the bar out of the middle of the neighborhood. And now you want to put us apartments in there. We have got not one apartment building around there that we don't have shootings, stabbings, the police constantly. We're tired of it. I've also ran the block watch since two thousand and seven, so I keep track of all this stuff. I almost got hit because I was gonna pick up one of the neighbors and bring him, let him ride with me down here. I almost got my car hit there on Carbondale across from this property, picking him up. Don't tell me the speed limit. They're going twenty-three mile an hour down Carbondale. You get hit if you go twenty-three mile an hour down Carbondale. So I'm asking you to vote no for the best, for the residents of this community. We don't need apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good eve, good evening. My name is Sheila Blanchard, and I'm a resident of the Walnut Heights area. Um, been there for almost twenty years. Love the area, love my neighbors, and, and we do all that we can to maintain it. Um, if I could, I would like to go back to just, if you could go back a couple of slides, I want to show something of that. That, and then also, as you can see, there are people. I want to put some humanity on this. All these houses right here, my neighbors.
You come up to this one here.
To this one?
Yeah.
Because there's a picture that doesn't show this. There's homes all right here, all along here. I live here on this side. All of my neighbors, we do everything that we can to support our area, keeping it clean. This street right here, Carbondale, couple of years ago, they took out all the speed bumps just to try to slow people down. People drive fifty miles an hour down this road. My friend that spoke at the last meeting, Amber, her car, an old fifty-seven truck that was left from her from her father, got hit over here. And there's always cars being destroyed on the street. Also, the park, they do use this for the football. Over here, you have so much trapping. And not that we're against the folks coming and doing the, the, the football league, but literally people have parked along here and have fought, almost got in fights with folks that live here because they blocked their driveways. So just to put a feel on why we are positioned to put a twenty-four unit apartment complex right here. You got football, you got a whole park. It would be wise for the city, would have been wise if the city would have purchased that and extended unity garden. But just to see the humanity, people live there. They've been there for thirty, forty, fifty years. And to put a twenty-four apartment, two-story, whatever, right there. It will, all of those people, I have talked to them, every last one of them will move. They will sell their houses. They're already thinking about it. But the surrounding area, the proposed site is primary of well-established, single-family homes in a city park. Introducing high-density residential apartments in the middle of this environment disrupt the cohesiveness of the community and the fabric that our residents have built over time, over the years. This project would alter family-friendly atmosphere, which I pretty much have shared that with you. What would be, what we would like to see, some of the ideas of community garden, a walk park, extending that, that perk over there and giving more ability. So I know my time is up. But we truly oppose this project. We would love to see um it used for, uh, the commercial, for it to remain the same. The residents and myself, we've lived here for many years. We chose this area because it consists of single-family homes. As um Ms. Bunting said, we have apartments on the outer. And I am also a member of the commission, area commission. We are typically, we have have thousands, well, hundreds since I've been there of requests for housing. We know that there is a need for housing in the city. But to plot a twenty, and we typically say yes. But I'm here in my own because I live on that second street right behind me. I live there. I ride past there every day to go home. But we are typically a commission of yes, because we understand the need. That we work with, with developers and ask them to make changes, and typically they will. But this right here, to disrupt all of those people's lives, there's a lot of other partials that would suit this, um, this project. And thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker.
Excuse me, ma'am. Would you just repeat your name, please?
I'm sorry, Sheila Blanchard.
Thank you.
Yes.
I've come equipped with photos again, so I'm gonna go ahead and start passing them down. I don't know if I'll discard these. Super, thank you. My name is Doug Hatcher. I'm a resident of the Walnut Heights area as well. I appreciate you giving me some time to speak here. Um, I, I pass these pictures along because I pass pictures of the garbage that was laid out in that same area last time. Uh, one of the biggest notes was the fact that there was tires there last time, which I appreciate, uh, the developer picking up and getting rid of. I appreciate him cutting down the branches, so the sidewalks are now walkable. But the, but the garbage that's laid out there is just a small sampling of what's out there right now. These were taken yesterday. I drove by today. It's still there. He just, for lack of a way to say it, passed performance. In this case, continues to show future respect for the property and the property surrounding. Approving this, uh, project is only going to become worse. As a commercial property, commercial people have a tendency to pick up the lots because they're required to by the city ordinances. I run twenty-two buildings here in Columbus. My people pick up the trash just in front of their buildings because it's required. As a landlord of apartments, he's the one that's going to be required to do it. But yet, he shows consistently, time after time after time, meeting after meeting after meeting, he just doesn't do it. If you look under the branches that he cut, he literally just laid the branches on top of the garbage that was already there. So, it's just, there's just no care. I get that you guys are just looking for, it either is or isn't within the plan. I understand that. It's zone commercial. We've been told by their attorneys that commercial would not work there. Yet, right next door is nothing but viable commercial business, which shows it does work. If it continues through with the apartment situation, there is a gas tank in there, I've been talking with the EPA. And we're gonna have to do a soil assessment, and those tanks will probably have to be removed, because when their approval for commercial is fine with that tank there, we're putting in apartments, there's a whole big change that's going on, from my understanding and after my conversations. So, these things aren't being brought up at all to you guys, but they make a huge difference. When these apartments back up to the houses on Carbondale, that's what they're gonna stare at. He could have easily put it against the park, and we might have even been more amicable to seeing it there. It could have been backed up to the other commercial. We might have been more amicable by that. But the minute you take away the privacy of the houses across the street from Carbondale, we start to run into huge problems. A fence does not solve that problem. They're gonna look out over those balconies, and they're gonna stare down, and those balconies are the walkways that are up there, and you can see those in the pictures that he's presented already. So, we're just asking to leave it as the, the current zoning. He should be able to make a living, it's his property, he bought it. Let him make a living, but let him make it under the current zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our speakers. Let's have the applicants back to the table. It's, in my experience, over a long number of years, it's very rare when the neighbors would rather have a C-four zoning across the street than a residential zoning across the street. Anytime that we've sat at this table and listened to someone say we're gonna do a less intense use, it's generally been cheered by the neighbors, not disdained by the neighbors. So, this is a very unique situation where you, where you have what appears to be a dormant site that isn't being fully utilized, and it's sleeping right now. Green grass, and even if there's some tin cans and some, some objects laying on the property, it's still just dormant. If someone came in there and put up a bar with a patio playing banjo music till two o'clock in the morning, you may not like it, the neighbors may not like that very much, but it would be entirely allowed by a C-four zoning. So, does this intrude as it's presented, does it intrude into this neighborhood? Disastrously, or, or is it, is it just a, a unique situation? I'm asking, I'm gonna ask my comrades here to give me an opinion of what you think, because apparently, this is seen as an intrusion. It, it's, it's a very commercial-looking residential commodity, according to the drawings I see. It looks like, it looks like a doctor's office, but it's an apartment. So it has a kind of a hyper-commercial look to it. But this could happen, without asking any questions, somebody could come in here and build a sports bar with patio, or one of these brewhouses. I don't particularly like to try to guess what kind of beer they might have under a tricky name. These are popular, and they could be, they could be there, so. I'm hearing you say, this, this seems to you like it's an intrusion into your neighborhood. Anything, anything, would you be here the same way if this was somebody trying to do a, a big sports bar with a bunch of TVs and a patio, and fireplaces? Would that be?
It's a bar causing trouble, we also got the liquor control that we can ask, or we can go and vote the area dry.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about causing trouble, I'm talking about dis- they use. It's not the same as somebody. Yeah, well.
My main issue with this apartment complex is, I don't live in that area, but I am in the commission, and I go over there, because I drive around to see what's going on, they fly down Carbondale. And you're adding twenty-six more cars to a three that is already.
Well, now, now, in answer to that, I understand that, and if I had a grandchild, I would say kid, but I'm too old for that. If I had a grandchild in that neighborhood, I sure wouldn't want cars zooming down the street fifty miles an hour.
There's more. In the city of Columbus, rent is extremely high. Because of that, people are living two and three room apartment, just to pay rent. I know this to be a fact, because we have other apartments in our area, the ones behind the Giant Eagle in Salton, Montana. There are many apartments that have two adults with children living in a two-bedroom, because they need to do that to pay the rent. If you get these apartments with twenty-four units and twenty-six spaces, even though technically it's one person per unit, it's not going to be. So you're gonna have twenty-five, thirty, forty more cars. All those cars are not gonna fit in that parking lot.
How many cars do you think there'd be there if that was a, a, a sports bar?
They won't be there every day.
They'll be there every day if they serve lunch and dinner, so.
As a resident.
My question is this. This owner, this, this property owner has property rights. And it's not for somebody else to say, well, you should put up a daycare there, or you should put up a Dairy Queen, it's, it's, it's his property, he's got rights, and he's got rights to put a pretty intense use in that place. And, and I think residential use, either you just don't want a bunch of strangers living there, and, you know, you, you've got, you've got a nice tightly-knit group of homeowners that you work together, and I applaud that. But we're at a dilemma here, because you're seeing this as, as though it's a, a wild intrusion into your property. And on the history of this commission, this would be considered a down zoning to less intensity, so.
They don't see what it is now.
I want to say that. I live right in front of where you're gonna, where he wants to put that. And I'm getting the feeling that it's probably gonna go his way, that's the feeling I'm getting. If you approve that, my question is, why does it have to be on that corner? Why can't it sit back into that property, if you approve it, to where the parking lot is? My house is right here. So I'm gonna come out of my front door, and people will elevate above me, looking into my house. I'm not going like that, you gotta do it like. So why wouldn't he put it into the property like that, and the strip mall over here, and be in the same, uh, position?
You've got a good common point, we, we have planners who say the city is, is better. The C-two, P-two says, put your building out on the, the edge of the property edge. So you hide this parking lot full of cars and.
So if you're gonna see the cars, then they will wear them.
Well, so, so you're saying that this may not be that bad a use if you did it a little different way.
I don't want it there, I'm getting the feeling that you gotta go approve it, so I'm just suggesting a different angle for the building. If you approve it, I don't want it there.
Well, I'll be honest with you, so far, I have not heard a, a successful argument.
What's better, how shady they are, this here was his attorney. He came with him to every meeting before the commission. When he fell through, that's when he hired him. Okay, also, this is how dirty they are, the commission voted it down twice. Through the full commission, what they do, we move the commission meetings back to the Pride Center. He snuck in again, trying to get it back on the commission's voting that night to get approved. He got fooled, and we voted it down again. I mean, that slowed down the dirty.
Well.
And, and to me, this commission is about the same way.
Well, I appreciate your comment. David, do you have any response to the, the meetings that you?
Commissioners, I was, I was hired after the community process was completed, so I was not present at the area commission meeting, I can't comment on that. But these, these land use relationships occur all over the city. There's nothing unusual about this land use relationship, absolutely nothing. On the, on the homeowner that's across the street, between the building setback, the right-of-way, his building setback, these balconies are a hundred feet or more from his house. Nobody's, nobody's on the balcony looking down right here at what's going on in his house, it's a hundred feet or more. There's been a lot of traffic comments, but this project is so small in terms of number of units and traffic, that this wouldn't even move the needle on traffic count. The traffic counts, Daniel, or the traffic comments, Daniel, have all been about speeding. I've driven this site, and, and I would say, holy cow, somebody driving fifty miles an hour on Carbondale. It's, that would be incredible. It's, it's a, it's a, but, but that's, but that's, but that's not a zoning issue, that's a police issue. Call the police, put the, put the, those speed gun things that are out there with the police. None of the traffic issues that were raised have anything to do with this twenty-four unit apartment building. It has to do with the police enforcing speed on Carbondale. The, the occasional use of that field for sports events, and maybe the on-street parking gets tight, and a silly driver parks blocking one of the residents' driveways, shame on them, tow the car. It's, it's, these are very simple traffic issues.
Do you have a way on this before I do? I, after last month, I went and drove it, and you know, this is just an unfortunate situation in terms of overall planning. If this was in New Albany, that area would be a town center. It would have absolutely specified uses, an idea of how the plan went together. But it's a vestige, you've got a big open park in the middle, I mean, you could say, you can look at one of the great failed ones, Tamarack Boulevard, say boom, there's your center, same way it is right here. You've got schools, you've got churches, you've got playing fields, you've got a little bit of commercial that is old. You don't have a less wexner throwing money at it. But you have to come up with a reasonable accommodation for everybody that wants to do something. This isn't gonna be the tail that wags the dog, it's an intrusion, but certainly, there's enough public interest to develop the rest of the site somehow. You know, whether it's city parks or whatever. But, I mean, the other part of this is, I thought you would come back with, I mean, you made some gesture, I guess would be the easy thing to say, with the setbacks. There are ten more feet. Is that, is that really a bend-over-backwards accommodation? I mean, you, you still have an adverse relationship here, and you're talking about an important piece of your community, and you got a willing developer, and you're not having a good dialogue.
Well, you know, Mr. Ingleson, there's, the, the bottom line issue here is, is a prejudice about apartments. Their, their turn in the building's not gonna solve it, it's still apartments. Planting twenty more trees on the site's not gonna solve it, it's still apartments. And, and there's nothing, absolutely nothing unusual about apartments being in a single-family area and adjacent to commercial, it's not, nothing unusual at all. The, the adversarial issue is, the, the fundamental issue is the adversarial issue that is apartments. And, yeah, commercial use, let's, let's put a used car lot on it tomorrow.
Yep.
Let's, let's build a building with a ground floor commercial with the bar or the restaurant, and two stories of apartments. I mean, this, this zoning is not about apartments. It's, it's about the form of the building, but it's not about apartments. No, zoning-wise, it is not about apartments. There, there is no solution that involves apartments that will be acceptable, so, you know, if you want to call that adversarial, so be it, but, but we often talk about the appropriateness of land use, and this clearly is.
I do have one question, and that is aesthetically, will the apartment, it looks the same as it did the last? So, are you with that?
I don't recall at the January meeting, Commissioner, any comment on the architecture.
I did not. However, I was hoping that you all would. I was hoping you would go back to the drawing board and come up with something that, you know, would be pleasing to the, to the community, but, I mean, it remains the same, basically.
If, I apologize, if, I apologize if I missed the memo, but, but I don't recall architecture discussion at the January.
They not bring it up.
Yeah, no, I don't mean you, I mean anybody, I don't think it wasn't part of the discussion.
But I was thinking we would go back and at least discuss that, you know, come up with something that was pleasing.
Yeah. It's the, I would still say, Commissioner, whether, whether it has a, a different skin on it, a different roof on it, the fundamental issue is apartments, in terms of the application, yeah.
But like I said, I, I just thought things were gonna be a little different when you came back.
Now, can I ask a question? The approval or disapproval of this scheme here is not actually approving the architecture.
So it is not, approving the site.
So in essence, once it is approved or disapproved, let's work on the as of when it is approved. The architect will still change to be contextual within the, within the neighborhood.
The zoning is not conditioned on the architect, or is conditioned on the site. If there's, you know, I'm, others, others are involved with this on pro forma, and.
Dave, I believe, is there, there's materials that are committed to?
There is, there is, yeah. Reconciling, yeah, reconciling, but, but not architecture, not that. You know, if, if, you know, others will have to, other than me, will have to decide if, you know, if, if a gable or a hip roof would make any difference, or is even viable, I, I don't know.
It might soften it up with architectural elements that make it, it in, better than it fits in.
Okay.
But the bottom line is, is this a down zoning, a less intense zoning than a C-four? Or, or is it off the wall, the other way?
It's, it is, it is very much of a down zoning, zoning-wise, and what this amounts to, I mean, there, there is no, you've not heard from any neighbor that has said, I've lived there for more than forty-two years. Twenty years, sure, there's been some different statements about twenty years, but what in effect has happened is privately-owned property has been green space for forty-two years.
Yeah, and, and that property owner has a right to get higher, highest and best use on the property, and not be told that, well, that should be a veterinarian's zone. If you want a certain use, then. So, if you want a certain use, then you need to buy the property and own it yourself and do, do it yourself. So, where does this needle tick? Does it tick here, here, here? Where, where does it set? And, you know, we have had way more people in this room object to an increase in intensity or density than the opposite. It's very rare that somebody is here to object to somebody saying, "We won't put something in here that stays open till two o'clock in the morning. We won't put something in here that has greasy food out in the dumpster," and et cetera, et cetera. This is, this can be a clean use, and, and I agree. John said earlier, this, this apartment looks like it was designed by a civil engineer. He's, he's right. It doesn't, it doesn't look very homey in its current form. I think you need to work on that if you want anybody to, to like the product. But it's the use that we're talking about here.
Right.
And, and that's what we need to vote on. And we have to be consistent. We, we've told people for twenty years. Time after time, we weigh, we weigh the elements, and in our own hearts, everybody here has a different life, a different way of looking at things, and we call the shots as we see fit. As you've seen, there's two or three cases already tonight where some of us voted yes, some of us voted no. We're all looking at the same thing. We're looking at different vantage points. So, we're about ready to take that vote, and that vote's gonna be, is this appropriate as a use? Or is this not appropriate?
For the use of the neighborhood?
I think the neighborhood may be able to sit down and say, you know, if you put, if you put some different kind of trim and warmed the thing up and made it more, uh, residential-looking a smaller human scale instead of kind of a.
Two boxes to drop.
Kind of like a medical office building. I mean, to me, that looks like a medical office building and you go.
Prison, yeah.
So I think there's room to do that, but we're not here to talk about what kinds of bells and whistles you can put on. We're here to talk about the use that's gonna take place on this piece of property. Are, are we gonna keep it so there could be a restaurant and a, a hopping, a showbar? Are we gonna talk about it as it, as a residential use that, that can slow things down? So, anybody else have any comments before we go to vote?
Okay, well, I can, I can commit for the project team that we will look at architecture. I can't, um, I'm not, I'm not the person to cost those items and so on, so I, I can't guarantee you that it will change, but I can commit that the project team will look at it.
I think you, you'd have a better product and a better business plan if you did. You're gonna attract, you, you don't wanna attract a bunch of people that, that are coming here. It's the institution. You wanna attract people that are gonna be good neighbors, and are gonna have, they're maybe not gonna have as much of a stake in, in the real estate as people that lived there for forty years. But I, I, I know a lot of apartment people that I'd be happy to have as a neighbor. So it's not just the use, it's, it's a lot of things that combine on it. And I think you're gonna attract, this is Columbus, Ohio. This is not New York City or Chicago. This is Columbus, Ohio. You need to think about making this a little bit more of a, of a, of an Ohio generic than it is right now. Soften it up, make it more human. But we can't tell you to do that. It, it's, it's gonna be a better business plan for you, I guarantee you. And your only two stories, you can build with the lowest common denominator construction class. You don't need high-rise concrete beams and fireproof steel. You've got, you build wood construction, so you can do anything. So you need to look at who your, your potential customers are. But you do have property rights, and we, we're beating this to death, but, but I think this is a down zoning. And I think it, it behooves you, if you want this to be a successful down zoning, just talk with these neighbors and accommodate them, so you're not the odd man out. And everybody turns their back on you. And it, that's, that's easy to do if you have some dialogue. Okay, we talked about this for almost an hour. I think it's time to call for the vote. I mean, we would like to go to a vote. Denise would like to, okay. I'll second. Okay, all those in favor? At least call roll.
Johnny Wilson?
Yes.
Karen Muque?
Yes.
Janice K. Shanklin?
No.
Maria Conroy?
I just wanna say one thing, and that is that my, I live in a community that most, uh, of Columbus would see as high-end community, and I can tell you that apartments that are across an alley from a million-dollar home, it is quite possible to have such mix of uses, very well done. So I am, I, I would prefer to see this remain as a commercial, but I do think it's an appropriate use, so I will vote yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Terrence Pepper.
Yes.
Okay, you're approved, but you need, you still got work to do.
Very good. I understand.
Can I say something, excuse me? Do we understand?